Good evening, welcome to the Township of Lacey, July 9, 2015 meeting. Addictive notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon and posted on the bulletin board showing the time and the place of the meeting. We're going to begin with a salute to the flag and move to silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number one, first reading of ordinance 2015-07 authorizing installation of fiber optic in the township right of way by Cross River Fiber.
The North City Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey authorizing installation of dark fiber optic cable and other telecommunications-related facilities by Cross River Fiber Incorporated over the public right of way. This is obviously, it's basically mandatory under the BPU regulations that they are granted the access to install various, whether it's fiber optic or overhead wires throughout the township. Of course, they have to comply if they're going to be doing any underground work with road opening permits and so on and so forth. And this is, there's no money that we can get from them because the statute doesn't allow it, and this is a 50-year lease, and it has been reviewed and approved by our legal team.
Can I motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number two, resolution 2015-164 authorizing various promotions.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey authorizing various appointments and promotions in the CWA clerical unit and the Teamsters unit pending provisional procedures by civil service. All right, we're promoting Lynn Talarico from Level Clerk One to Level Clerk Two, and we're promoting Richard Tupper from Laborer to Truck Driver, and Peter Jensen from Laborer to Truck Driver.
Can I motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, and I'd like to congratulate Rich and Pete, if you want to stand up. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Well done, my family. Thank you guys so much. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Pete. Both of these gentlemen have been with us for a long time and have done an outstanding job and have worked their way to the ranks, and it's due time that you certainly move up, so we truly appreciate your hard work and dedication for the residents of Lacey Township. Casey's sitting there with a smile on his face, so he's very happy tonight. But we congratulate you and thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yes.
You guys can go home now if you want, you don't have to stay here anyway.
Yeah, we have, we have 41 more items if you want to stick around.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
Okay, item number three, resolution 2015-165 appointing emergency management coordinator.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey appointing David Paparota as emergency management coordinator for the Township of Lacey. Our previous emergency management coordinator resigned as of June 30th. Under state law, we're required to make an appointment of a new one, and it will be Chief David Paparota.
Can I motion?
Move it.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, and item number four, resolution 2015-166 renewing plenary retail consumption license for the 2014-2015 licensing period.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey renewing plenary retail consumption licenses in the Township of Lacey. This is for last year's licensing period. This is for the Forkett River House. They have worked out various issues that they had with taxation, they finally got that cleared up, and now I have to renew last year's before we can renew this year's.
Can I motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number five, resolution 2015-167 renewing plenary retail distribution licenses.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey renewing plenary retail distribution licenses in the Township of Lacey. This is for the current licensing period, the 2015-2016 period. This is for Spirits Unlimited, Lacey Liquors, and JR Liquors.
Can I motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number six, resolution 2015-168 renewing plenary retail consumption licenses.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey renewing plenary retail consumption licenses for the 2015-2016 period. This will be Caffrey's, Philguru Danos, Applebee's, Relo's, which is a pocket status, so the license stays on the premises here, Latitudes, Forkett River House, which is a pocket license status, and the license stays here, and Captain's Inn Restaurant.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number seven, resolution 2015-169 renewing club licenses.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey renewing club liquor licenses in the Township of Lacey. This is for the 2015-2016 period, and those club liquor licenses are the Lacey Ox Lodge, the VFW, the Loyal Order of the Moose, the Knights of Columbus, and the Forkett River Tuna Club.
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number eight, resolution 2015-170 authorizing acceptance and execution of easements affecting Block 1837, Lot 8.05.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey authorizing acceptance and execution of numerous easements and agreements and maintenance agreements for stormwater management based and affecting Block 1837, Lot 8.05 with Lacey Family Apartments LLC. This is the old nursing home site. As we're developing it, there's various easements that are needed to be acquired in site triangles and sewer water and tree preservations and temporary construction easements, and this is just putting all of them in place.
Can I motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number ten, resolution 2015-172 awarding a contract for the Cedar Drive Road Improvement Project.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey awarding a contract to Johnson Barron Corporation for the 2014 Department of Transportation Municipal Aid Project known as Cedar Drive Road Improvements. There were five bids received on July 2nd, the lowest responsible bidder was Johnson Barron in the amount of, for base bid, $376,788.01, and for the total with the alternate is $30,836.89. There's a $220,000 DOT grant that we're receiving towards this project to help offset it.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number eleven, resolution 2015-173 awarding a contract for the purchase of a Toro Groundmaster Model 3280D.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey awarding a contract to turf equipment and supply for the purchase of a 2015 Toro Groundmaster Model 3280D, two-wheel drive, 72-inch cut with recycler deck. The total amount of this lawnmower is $21,340.20, and it's quite the lawnmower.
Move it.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Second, please.
Second.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number twelve, resolution 2015-174 awarding a contract for the purchase of a Toro Groundmaster Model 4000D.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey awarding a contract to turf equipment and supply for the purchase of a 2015 Toro Grounds Master Model 4000D, 11-foot width turf cutting unit. This is a total amount of $61,046.20.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number fourteen, resolution 2015-176 awarding a contract for the purchase of a John Deere Model 5065E utility trailer.
Didn't you skip one?
Item thirteen, resolution 2015-175 awarding a contract, Casey got nervous there, didn't he?
Oops.
Flail mower.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey awarding a contract to Store Tractor Company for the purchase of a Bonford Kestrel 5.0S flail mower in the amount of $37,800.
Can I motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number fourteen, resolution 2015-176 awarding a contract for the purchase of a John Deere Model 5065E utility tractor.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey awarding a contract to Deer and Company for the purchase of a 2015 John Deere Model 5065E utility tractor, 49 to 53 PTO horsepower with bucket and fork attachments, and this is $41,041.33.
Can I motion?
Move it.
Second.
You didn't think I knew what HP meant, didn't you?
I know, and I was.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number fifteen, resolution 2015-177 awarding a contract for the window replacement at the Police Department.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey awarding a contract to Winder Co. Incorporated for window replacement for the Lacey Township Police Department. The total amount of this contract is $27,000.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number sixteen, resolution 2015-178 awarding a contract for the purchase of a juror-class stainless steel dump body.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey awarding a contract to H.A. Hart for the purchase of one 2015 juror-class 10-foot stainless steel dump body and hoist. Total amount of this contract is $24,458.88.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number seventeen, resolution 2015-179 awarding a contract for the purchase of a 2015 GMC Yukon XL.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey awarding a contract to Barlow Automotive LLC for the purchase of one 2015 GMC Yukon XL four-wheel drive four-door SLE with nine-foot Western Pro plus snowplow package option or proof to equal, so it is $51,847.
Can I motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number eighteen, resolution 2015-180 awarding a contract for the purchase of a 2015 Peterbilt Model 367 tandem roll-off.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey awarding a contract for the purchase of one 2015 Peterbilt Model 367 set-back front axle tandem axle roll-off truck to Hunter Keystone Peterbilt Limited Partnership in the amount of $180,995.
Can I motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number nineteen, resolution 2015-181 awarding a contract for the repair and rehabilitation of the Gilly Park Basketball Court and the inline skating rink.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey awarding a contract for the repair and rehabilitation of the Gilly Park Basketball Court and the Gilly Park Inline Skating Rink within the Township of Lacey to the Racket Shop Incorporated in the amount of $32,850.
Can I motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number twenty, resolution 2015-182 authorizing a change order to the contract with Beacon Marine Construction for the 2013 Street End Bulkhead Project.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey authorizing the execution of an amendment to the contract with Beacon Marine Construction for the 2013 Street End Bulkhead Project. This is a total increase on the project of $2,736.36.
Can I motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number twenty-one, resolution 2015-183 awarding a contract for the purchase of police vehicles to Winter Ford of Cherry Hill.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey awarding two 2016 Ford Explorer Police Intercepter Utility Vehicles with options and one 2016 Ford F-150 4x4 Super Crew Cab with options to Winter Ford of Cherry Hill. The total amount of this contract is $81,296.80.
Can I motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number twenty-two, resolution 2015-184 awarding a contract for the purchase of various equipment to outfit the police vehicles to major police supply.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey awarding a contract to major police supply for vehicle equipment for the new police vehicles. Total amount of this contract, and it's being awarded under state contract in the amount of $13,896.80.
Can I motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number twenty-three, resolution 2015-185 awarding a contract for the purchase of communication equipment to wireless communications and electronics.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey awarding a contract to wireless communications and electronics for radio communication equipment for the new police vehicles. This is in the amount of $3,169.50, and it's being ordered under state contract.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number twenty-four, resolution 2015-186 awarding a contract to Jeffrey Serenian and Associates for representation for the township's fair share housing obligation.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey authorizing the execution of a shared services defense agreement with Jeffrey Serenian and Associates in the amount of $2,000.
Can I motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number twenty-five, resolution 2015-187 placing a lien on Block 1024.25, Lot 25.14 for property maintenance.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at 1724 Longwood Drive, Lot 1024.25, Lot 25.14, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said cost in the total amount of $119.78.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number twenty-six, resolution 2015-188 placing a lien on Block 1246, Lot 10 for property maintenance.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at 1535 Lakeside Drive South, Block 1246, Lot 10, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said cost in the amount of $102.76.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number twenty-seven, resolution 2015-189 placing a lien on Block 1631.01, Lot 6 for property maintenance.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at 6 Stubeen Court, Block 1631.01, Lot 6, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said cost in the amount of $326.66.
Move it.
Second, please.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number twenty-eight, resolution 2015-190 placing a lien on Block 101.11, Lot 6 for property maintenance.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at 1106 Neptune Court, Block 101.11, Lot 6, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said cost. Total amount is $116.56.
Can I motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number twenty-nine, resolution 2015-191 placing a lien on Block 1501, Lot 3 for property maintenance.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at 681 Deere Drive, Block 1501, Lot 3, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said cost in the amount of $116.56.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number thirty, resolution 2015-192 placing a lien on Block 822, Lot 5 for property maintenance.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at 1012 Laurel Boulevard, Block 822, Lot 5, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said cost in the amount of $216.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number thirty-one, resolution 2015-193 placing a lien on Block 204, Lot 2 for property maintenance.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at 1703 Tamiami Road, Block 204, Lot 2, and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said cost in the amount of $162.51.
Can I motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number thirty-two, resolution 2015-194 authorize the insertion of a special item of revenue in the budget.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue and appropriations in the 2015 municipal budget known as the Chapter 159 of the Township of Lacey pursuant to NJSA 4A:4-87. This is for the Alcohol Education Rehabilitation and Enforcement Fund in the amount of $4,714.65.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, item number thirty-three, resolution 2015-195 requesting approval of a dedication by rider.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey requesting approval of the Director of the Division of Local Government Services to establish a dedication by rider for donations for Bicentennial Park. This is so that the donations that we receive tonight and any future donations we receive for the rehabilitation of Bicentennial Park will go into this dedicated account, which can only be spent then for the rehabilitation of that property.
Can I motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
This is for right-of-way monuments. We're releasing the performance guarantee and there is no need to post a maintenance.
Okay, motion.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Ida number thirty-six, Resolution two thousand fifteen one ninety-eight authorizing release of a maintenance bond for White Oaks at Lacy Grove Street.
Resolution attached at Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey authorizing release of a maintenance bond posted for White Oaks at Lacy Grove Street between Beagleswood Avenue and Plumstead Court for various locks in lots. This has been approved and reviewed by the township engineer. They're being released from their maintenance.
Can I motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Epstein.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Ida number thirty-seven, Resolution two thousand fifteen one ninety-nine authorizing release of deposit monies.
Resolution attached at Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey authorizing the refund of deposit help for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Ida number thirty-eight, Resolution two thousand fifteen two hundred authorizing the payment of the township bills.
Resolution attached at Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of six million five hundred and fifteen thousand one hundred sixty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes. Ida number thirty-nine, Monthly Reports.
All right. No.
No.
For the month of June, the Tax Collector's Office collected receipts in the amount of five hundred and sixty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-nine cents. For the month of June, Municipal Court collected receipts in the amount of twenty-six thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents. For the month of June, Municipal Clerk's Office collected receipts in the amount of twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars and ninety-eight cents. For the month of June, road opening permits were collected in the amount of five thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Recycling commodities in the amount of seven hundred and six dollars. And parking spots for oversized trucks in the amount of a hundred and ninety dollars. Motion to accept the reports is read.
Move it.
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Ida number forty, Motion to approve Township Meeting Minutes of June eleventh, two thousand fifteen.
Move it.
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Ida number forty-one, Motion to approve Caucus Meeting Minutes of June eleventh, two thousand fifteen.
Move it.
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Ida number forty-two, Motion to approve Membership in the Fort River Fire Company for George Ivans.
Move it.
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Ida number forty-three, Motion to approve Rappa License Application for the Lees Historical Society, the Fort River Rotary Club, and the Ocean Shrine Ladies Club.
Move it.
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Um, add-ons?
Can you imagine? I really do. It's one resolution. It's Resolution two oh-one. It's a Resolution attached at Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey authorizing employment of seasonal employees for the Recreation Department. We've had some students who haven't been able to make it back. We're hiring one additional recreation aide that will help with the handicap program at the high school. And we have, I mean, additional bus drivers which we're hiring.
Can I motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Aye.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
And that is all I have to add on.
Okay. Comments from the committee? Rita?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to start off by just saying congratulations to our employees tonight, Ms. Talarico, Ms. Tupper, and Mr. Chanson. And to lead into my next comment, two times a year, the, we meet in this room, and it's for our emergency preparedness. We meet once every six months. And one of the topics that always comes up, actually, it's a program. It's our Fire Wise program. And it was, it was a real education for me to be around the fire departments and to learn exactly, you know, what, what causes and how it's characterized, a high risk, a low risk, an accelerant, things like that. But for our residents in Pheasant Run, I had a conversation not so long ago with our DPW commander, Casey Parker. And we had said that after the Fire Wise program, if people cleaned up their properties that could be combustible, that the DPW would pick it up. Well, it turns out that people did clean up their properties, and our DPW took away a little over three hundred yards that's going to be mulched over and recycled. So, you know, when, when our department heads do things like that, and, and that type of service gets out into our community, I really want people to know about it. I know that people know about what type of department heads that we have here. But that, that program in particular, to help folks that may, may need some help with the lifting and the disposal, we go out there and we take it. And to, to picture that out, that's fifteen, twenty-yard containers. That's, that's a lot of refuse that's going to get recycled. So, I'm grateful to our Department of Public Works for that. Moving on, I had the great honor of attending with our deputy mayor, Stephen Kennis, the Lacy Township High School graduation. It was a, it was just, we were blessed with great weather. We did meet the school board there, of course, the principal, James Hanschew. Everybody did a great job, and I wish those graduates really, really well. The families were there. It was, it was everything you'd expect a graduation to be. And of course, whenever we go anywhere, we represent the whole committee. But for me, it was just exceptional. It was an honor to be there. So, I just want to congratulate our graduates. One of the other things I did want to talk about, on the Lacy Reporter, people might have seen me have a short, five-minute interview with one of our department heads. I thought this was a good idea. You know, I'm about transparency for the person who gets up in the morning and commutes maybe to Manhattan and isn't as immersed in the town as the people in this room. I just wanted people to know that, you know, colleg- collegially up here, and I, and I'm not only singling out James Wyland, Casey, our chief of police, people are encouraged to apply for and do receive, most of the time, grants. So, I want people to know that. If you happen to go to the Lacy Reporter, that interview is there. And I think James, in particular, has applied for and received a little over ninety-five thousand dollars in grants since 2011. So, I mean, that, those are the type of things that I, I want people to know that we're being good stewards with their money because that matters. It matters to me, and I, I know it matters to us. It's why we're up here. Lastly, I just want to mention, you know, we did have a tragedy recently. You know, one of our officers was involved in, in an accident. It's a great family, a great group of people. And my heart goes out to that family, that police officer, as well as the deceased party. So, I know that I'm not alone when I say we wish them the best. It's a very unfortunate thing that happened. And, you know, these things, they, they happen, and it's, it's just unfortunate. Great police officer and great family. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Juliano.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to just thank the, the Fishhawks. I had the honor to go to the Lighthouse Center for National Resource Education in Waretown. First time I've ever been there. It was amazing. The place was beautiful. The Fishhawks brought in people from our military, all their children, to teach them how to fish, crab. And in the whole aspect of the whole thing, when it was all said and done, they gave them fishing poles, tackle boxes, and it was just a great day. I spent most of the day there. The people were great. Carl Dahl, he's the vice president of the Fishhawks. It was just nice to have. I know, Mayor, you were invited, but you were on vacation. So, I went, and it was just a, a great affair for everybody. Secondly, I had the installation, the honor to go to the installation of the Coast Guard Auxiliary for Paul D. Ferrara. He had twenty-five years of service. Great organization also. And we, we had a lot of talking about boating, because I've been around boating all my life. And I was enjoying having, being around all of them people there. So, it was really great. That's about all I have, Mayor, tonight. That's all I have.
Mr. Kennis?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if anybody had a chance to read the news this week. The Mercatus Center from George Mason University came out with their annual ranking of the fiscal health of all fifty states. New Jersey finished forty-ninth. That's not good.
Why is it not?
I would just like our elected officials in Trenton to really try and to improve the business climate in New Jersey. It really affects us in South Jersey more so than North Jersey. South Jersey is very, very dependent on real estate, and until that gets turned around, we're all in for a long slog. In addition to that, this, I had a chance to attend the fireworks show with the rest of the members of our committee. And I want to thank Exelon for, for hosting and donating that event. And a very minor thing that probably nobody notices, but the, the Public Works went out and trimmed the branches along the bike paths on Manchester Avenue, the very, the low-lying branches. So, I really appreciate that, because I use those paths quite a bit. That's all I have.
Thanks, Steve. Mr. Dykoff?
Once again, we saw the township at work and, and the volunteers at work tonight with Rotary and Sentimental Cruisers and Captain Zinn, working hard and giving back to the township. And I'd just like to thank them, as usual, for being great partners in the township. And they've been doing it for many years, and, and I'm sure as long as they're around, they'll continue to do it. So, I'll have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Just again, and not to be repetitive, but, you know, special thanks to Sentimental Cruisers, Captain Zinn, you know, for, for their donations this evening to the Rotary Club and to the Food Bank. Both of those are great organizations. And the Rotary Club, you know, extremely special thanks for, for the donation to the municipality to tell, help us along with the park that we're working on. Rotary has been here so many times over the years, and they're always, you know, here with something to present to this, to this town. And the organization just goes above and beyond. So, you know, I thank them very special for the residents of the town. We started our farm market. Our farm market's open again. We're, we're holding it this year down at the Methodist Church in partnership with Methodist Church. It's given us more area to set it up. We brought more vendors in. We have larger areas set up with vendors. There's apparently bread vendors there. There's pickles and olives, different things that we haven't had in the past. So, if you have the opportunity, it's going to be down at the church tomorrow between the hours of eleven and five. Jimmy Whedon told me today that between four and five, there's not a lot left. So, if you want good produce, get there more towards eleven. If you want what's left over, you know, after four o'clock, your pickings are very slim. But it looks like it's going to be a great success having it down there. I want to thank, you know, the guys for, for doing the graduation. I was out of town on the graduation for the high school. I did attend the middle school. The night of high school graduation, we had a monsoon come through town, I guess, and Tuesday night, it was canceled. And then I was, I left early Wednesday morning. But I, I, you know, like, like Pete said, it's, it's truly an honor to be invited to the graduations and to spend that opportunity. Gavin, I know you graduated that night, to, to be able to share that opportunity with the graduates. And, you know, it's very, very special to us as committee members. So, we, we congratulate them as a committee. We congratulate them as individuals and, and wish them all the very best. You know, Gavin, you included in your, your future endeavors with college and whatever you move on to in the, the next couple of years. But enjoy it. It's the best time of your life. So, have a great time with it. The fireworks, you know, just like, I, I guess Stephen just said, the fireworks were really a, a great night. We had a, a real good night weather-wise. It was, I believe, in the seventies. It was a nice breeze. It wasn't humid. And, and without Exelon, like it was said, you know, making a donation, we couldn't do that, because we cut it out a few years back when we had real difficult times. And we, we have not had the fund it ever since we cut it out. Exelon has come through with the funding each and every year for us. And we never have to ask. They automatically make a call to us and, and have the check ready for us. And, you know, they deserve a tremendous amount of thanks for doing that for the residents of Lacy. I also want to extend some thanks to Jimmy Whedon, our recreation director, who puts it all together throughout the course of the year, the program itself, working with the fire, fireworks company, Casey Parker and his crew for, for setting everything up over there. And a special thanks for Chief Apparata and the police department in town. We're on high alert this year with the issues going on around the country, and we certainly had a lot more police presence and a lot of things in the background that folks weren't aware of, but they were working, you know, to do their best to protect the residents of Lacy. And they did a great job. So, I thank them for that. The last announcement I have, I just want to announce that we're, even though that we're six months into the year, we have our new calendar, which Row and Public Works is starting to work on for next year. And we're going to be following the same format next year. And I just want to announce that we're out soliciting photos of different things around town that we'd like to include in our two thousand sixteen calendar. If you'd like to submit a photo, photos can be submit, photos can be emailed to the Public Works Department or dropped off on a CD slash flash drive. And Row is going to collect them all and then make a decision as to what she's going to use for different pages of our calendar. If you have this year's calendar and you take a look at it, you'll see that they're all individual, for individuals from mostly town that have taken the photos that really, you know, made the calendar a much nicer calendar than we found in the past. It was getting to the point where it was a little stagnant. And Row was looking for good ideas, and she came up with a great idea in doing what she did. So, I thank her for that. And if you're interested in having a photo in there, get out, get your camera, and start running around town. Gavin, about taking pictures. With that, I'll open the floor to public comment. Barry?
Good evening. Barry Bender, Historic Bay Avenue. Just wanted to touch base. There were a few ladies and myself who attended the Board of Health meeting last night in regard to the topic that these same ladies brought up. I guess it was the last meeting that we had, or was it, might have been?
The tethering issue?
The tethering.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And we met with Committee Mayor Cortolo. It was presented with various ordinances that have been passed in a lot of the towns around us. And I just wanted to find out status-wise where we might stand right now as far as getting possibly, we have one meeting in August. I'm wondering if it's possible.
Yeah, we, we have a meeting August thirteenth.
We're waiting for recommendations to come back from the local Board of Health with the, the ordinance that we should be developing, which then the committee would, would, well, last night was the meeting. So, the, the secretary is on vacation this week, so she's not able to put the recommendation forth to the committee.
Okay.
So, once we have that, we will review the draft concept of the ordinance. And then the committee will have first and second reading, which I'm probably, at this point, we're probably looking at, the earliest a first reading could be, would be the first meeting in September. You know, the latest would be the second meeting in September.
But in September, you go back to two?
Yes, yes, yes. So, so the, the earliest that the first reading would be, would be the, the first meeting in September. If we can agree on the type of draft ordinance that we want, we also are having our animal control officer look at the ordinance we have in the draft so to make sure that it is enforceable. The ordinance that's being presented is not necessarily enforceable to be held up in the court of law. So, we need to draft it that, to make it enforceable for us here in Lacy. I, I can't have the animal control officer sit at somebody's house for six hours to see if their dog is tethered, because it's an expense that none of us could afford.
Absolutely.
You know, so we do have to do something.
But the idea of, of having an ordinance?
Yes, we are working on it.
That you can't leave your dogs sitting out twenty-four hours a day?
Right.
Three hundred and sixty-five days a year, no matter what the weather is, is just common sense.
Yes. And we, and, and I know that our local legislatures, through, Senator Holtzapple's office is developing something statewide. But as he's recommended, the township introduces their own until the state does something on their own. So, we are developing something that will best suit the needs of our residents and, of course, the animals of our community.
We're, we're going to adopt something. We just want to make sure it's enforceable. That's what it's going to come down to.
Right now, your, your animal control officer is handcuffed, because there's nothing.
You're right.
Correct.
So, by putting something there, you're giving him teeth, if you will.
Yeah, no doubt about it.
I was encouraged by last night. I'm glad that you came. I mean, it was, I don't think there was anything negative that came out of it.
No, no.
Everyone had opportunity to voice their opinion.
Yeah.
Those, we, we had a secretarial person there taking those notes down. And so, we're just going through the process now. But, you know, I think everyone's in lockstep agreement. I mean, we, we are animal lovers here. We, we have pets that we love. So, this is something that we are working on. And we, we gave you our word on that last night. I, I think you'll be happy with what we come back with. We just need time to do it.
Absolutely. Well, I'm optimistic that we'll see something in September. Thank you very much.
Otto?
Thank you. I was had some other comments to make. But first, I'd like to say, I think one of the pictures that should be on the new Lacy calendar is this picture of Deerhead Lake Drive with the no swimming signs, beach closed from ten a.m. to four p.m., no swimming, and filled with geese.
Let me just respond to you first, Otto. The, the no swimming signs went up this year because of the lack of use of that beach over the last couple of years. And that recommendation came from the, the head of the, the beach, you know, department over in the Recreation Department. Just, let me just finish, because economically, it just didn't make sense to have kids sitting over there and painting them and, you know, not really utilizing them for anything. So, we have the other beach that we've been utilizing at, at the other lake, and that's getting a tremendous amount of action. And really, the reason why I think it's getting the action it's getting even last year and the year before, was because of the improvements that were done by the county with the drainage in the street. When they put those new drainage basins and eliminated a lot of the pollution going into the lake itself. And that water is extremely, you know, clear and very, very swimmable. So, that's why we seem to be getting people over there. Other than economics, you know, it's, it's a question of spending money for no reason whatsoever. That's why it was done the way it was done.
Well, you sort of rose a sleeping giant, because before, I've been talking about this lake by myself. I've heard a bunch of petitions that we put out just less than a week ago about saving the lake. The people are a little upset over the whole thing. We probably would have gotten more signatures, but believe me, people are actually fearing of retribution from the council or the township if they say anything against it, which makes me feel very bad, because I don't think the council would do that.
No.
It is, however, a situation where I have been on this lake since I was a kid, probably longer than any of you have been down here. I remember when this township had three lakes. The Mill Pond, Lake Varnigot, and Deerhead Lake. Lake, the Mill Pond was abandoned years ago, and it looks terrible now. Anybody who's by can say that. You're doing that to Deerhead Lake right now, but there is a difference in it. Deerhead Lake is upstream from Lake Varnigot. If Deerhead Lake goes to a condition like Varnigot, like the Mill Pond is, what's going to happen to Lake Varnigot? I mean, I have often wondered even now, how come our lake was closed for pollution and yet Lake Varnigot was open when the, when the water from Lake Deerhead goes into Lake Varnigot? It really makes me wonder what the situation is. I live on Deerhead Lake. I sit on my deck and I watch the geese going across the beach and over and eating. And I walk by and I see the goose droppings, not only on the beach, but actually on the road and the sidewalk. I mean, this is not only a horrible thing to happen to the lake, but it's a real health hazard. When is the Township Committee going to try to do something about it? I've been asking that question for years. And I get the same answer, we're working on it. Well, I don't see much progress.
Let me just say, Otto, the, I, you know, we're certainly, you know, anxious to accept petitions. And, and we certainly recognize the fact that there's residents out there that have a major concern, as do we. We certainly want to save the lake. We don't want that lake in any, you know, form like Mill Pond is today. And that's something that we, we all are trying to find a way to do. The geese problem is a, a problem that we have. Every town around has, pretty much every state in the Northeast has. And we don't have a solution for that. We thought we had a solution a number of years back. We were going to take and have the geese euthanized. You remember what happened with that. It was not well-accepted, and majority of people were very outraged.
It was not well-accepted by people outside the area.
Yeah, it was not accepted by a lot of people within the area also. I mean, I, I was here at the time. Mr. Dykoff was here at the time. And a lot of local people really didn't want to see that happen. Just like we're trying to do something to protect the, the dogs and stuff in town with the tethering ordinance, these are still animals that certain people have a love of. And you just can't go out and start taking and euthanizing them and, you know, do it because we're the governing body. We are looking at different options. We have taken and looked into the possibility of what we would have to do, as we've said over and over again in many meetings. All of the drainage that's coming down from Lacy Road all the way down to the lake is feeding into that lake. We know that's a major part of the problem. We have gone out, we have gotten cost, you know, estimates to try and determine what it's going to cost us. And we know it's going to cost us a million dollars to take and improve those drainage basins to offset that, you know, drainage from going into the lake. We have to find a way to do it. We're looking at possibly getting grant money. We haven't found anything for it yet. And it's, it's, although you don't see something moving where there's trucks and machines out there on a regular basis, there is a lot of movement going on in the background, trying to find a way to do it. But it just didn't make sense for us this year to take and put lifeguards on that lake, knowing that we didn't have the activity of a number of people swimming in the lake. Those people that you have signed that petition, whatever number of petitions there are, you know, have the same interest as everyone sitting up here. But those are not people that are going to that lake to swim. They want to see the lake protected because of the beauty of the lake. We didn't have swimmers there last year. But again, this committee is going to continue to move forward and do anything we can. If you have solutions or ideas, we're open to anything. We listen to you.
My first question I had is, why was the sign closed from ten a.m. to four p.m. and only gates locked?
Because the county requires that. We're required by the county to post those because of liability, we have to post those signs.
How come there's no liability after four p.m. or before ten a.m.?
It would only be during the hours that we would normally have lifeguards on duty that we're required to have them.
Well, if you put the no swimming sign, doesn't that cover it?
No, no, because we have other lakes that are open for swimming. That lake has been established and set up for that purpose as well. So, it has to be closed during the hours when the guards are on the other beaches. Once that is over with, then the lake is reopened. It's the same as if you're down in Long Beach Island or any of the barrier islands. The lifeguards leave at five. You're on your own after that. But the lifeguards down Long Beach Island won't let you swim over there when they're over here. You have to, you know, go by the, the laws that they have.
It just, it just really makes me sick, because between
I know that.
At ten a.m. and at four p.m., those geese march like soldiers across that bay. They love it, because they, nobody hassles them. And they go across, and they eat the little bit of grass that's still left over there. And then they come back with their droppings across the parking lot and across the beach and into the lake. I mean, I know the township spent a small fortune rerouting that road, putting the driveways in, putting a rest station on the, on the beach and everything else. And for what?
Because we're
Totally, I totally lost the cause.
We were mandated by the state of New Jersey, DEP, to rebuild the dam at that lake. That's why it was done.
The dam, but not the road, not the parking lot, not the restroom. All of that was done by the committee.
That was done by the committee based on the fact that we're rebuilding the dam, and we had a very unsafe situation over there. If somebody was going to sit on the beach, forget about swimming. If they were going to walk over and sit on the beach, they had to cross over the main road where traffic flowed in and out of the pines. And we didn't want to have any type of fatalities there. So, we thought the best way to go was to reroute the roadway. We do that all over town, Otto.
Gentlemen, ladies, gentlemen, it is with great, great regret that I see what's happening to this lake. I taught my kids to swim in this lake. I taught my grandkids to swim in this lake. I met my wife on this lake. I sailed a boat on this lake. I sailed, I sailed an ice boat on this lake. I've done a lot of crazy things on this lake. And I've enjoyed it. And it feels a real deep feeling of regret in my heart when I see what happens to it.
Well, Otto, if I could comment just for a moment. The Ocean County Health Department has a robust testing formula, and they have that methodology on the website, O C H D dot org. They test these lakes. These, these lakes have been tested twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen, twenty-fourteen. The closures have been cut in half. They're measured for fecal coliform. The testing methodology is on, and they're tested weekly, and that begins on Memorial Day weekend. I have, I have this here, because I anticipated that you might come tonight. You're often here, and you're always welcome. But I want to, I want to tell you, and I want to be clear, if, if somebody's in those lakes, those lakes have been tested. Okay? They're, they're tested. And they, there have been fewer closures year over year over year, up to and including this year, where I believe, I'm not one hundred percent certain, but I believe there haven't been any closures compared to twenty-twelve, when there were several. So, there's fewer and fewer closures and the same amount of testing going on.
Well, this year, there'll be very few closures, just one for the whole season. Now, if this is the way you feel the problem's going to be handled, that's the way it is. Now, our freeholder, Lacy, I read that he had the same problem in Manahawken Lake and took care of the problem. And he told people plain who were objecting to what has to be done, that he preferred people to geese. Apparently, here, we prefer geese to people.
First of all, Otto, I, I know Jimmy Lacy very well, and I, I can't see that comment coming from Jimmy Lacy, you know. But I will make a call to Jimmy tomorrow morning and find out. The freeholder, you know, will certainly be available to comment.
Because
But I, I
We've, we've got to do something, because, I mean, I don't want to live on the Mill Pond. And I'm sure that quite a few of these people who live on the lake and the ones who don't live on the lake feel very much about it. Now, Mrs. Bernhardt, who helped me write this and who actually wrote it, has said it in a very nice way and a way that, far better than I can, because I'm emotional about it. I got to admit that.
I understand.
And to see something that I love being destroyed by benign neglect gets to me to very depth of my feelings.
Let me just correct you. It's not benign neglect on behalf of the township. The township, as you've come here over and over and over again, talk, and talking about Casey and his department being out there on a regular basis, it's unfortunate it's being destroyed right now by a geese population that we haven't found a solution to resolve. That's what it's being destroyed by.
Well, some of the solutions that you tried were rather humorous. When I think back When I think back of the kite man coming in here and costing Township money, I gotta admit it was an enjoyable thing to watch. But it had about as much chance as a snuggle in hell. But I'll give you this and I'll sit down and let anybody else who might be interested in saying something about what was going on here.
Thanks, Otto. Thank you.
There's two copies in there, only one is.
Oh.
See, they're giving away to Stella. Thank you, Mrs. Bernhardt. Thanks, Otto.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Bernhardt, you wanna say something?
Yes, I will.
Feel free. Just your name and address, please.
It's Christine Bernhardt, 1763 Serpentine Drive. I'm one of the people that have lived here for a long time. My family's on third generation. I learned to swim in the beach, had my first kiss on the cabana on the beach. I mean, it's also a very emotional place for me. I live right across the street from the lake. And I will say the Township does a wonderful job of keeping the triangle and circle of grass in front of the lake in very nice condition. I'm a little surprised, it takes $400,000 in equipment expenditures just at this meeting to do that. Nevertheless, they do a good job at that. But the lake is sad. And I've said that every meeting you tell Mr. Zell that something's gonna be done and we don't see anything being done. Now the lake is closed, people are going down to the, we call it the dog lake. Now, the sewer is, it's sitting on the beach there because they can't get on the beach there, you know, on the whole rest of the beach. And I think that the town is doing a disservice to us taxpayers. It seems like there's lots of money for other things, but not forgetting this lake in shape. If it takes a million dollars, well, let's come up with it. Well, you know, it's $400,000, our tractor's already here. That's half, almost half of what you need. I just feel like, as much as you say you care, and I'm sure you do, you all live in this town also, I don't think it's been gotten the attention that it deserves. And I don't know what the solution is. I'm just, I'm like everybody else. I've been sitting home and saying, oh, Mr. Zell is carrying the van. He's coming here all the time. He's gonna bring this to everybody's attention and something will be done. And he'll come back and say, oh, yeah, they said they're gonna take care, they're gonna do something. And now our beach is closed. So that's a little frustrating, more than a little frustrating to those who live here and love, we came here because of the lakes. And to see them go down like this, I think it's a disservice to the whole town.
One question for you. When you're talking about them going down, you're talking about the geese issue as well, I would assume?
Well, the geese issue is one of the issues, yeah. The weed growth, the drainage, I mean, there's all kinds of problems. It's not like just one thing that's caused this. And even though the water quality may be okay, to get to the water, you gotta walk through two feet of goose poop. I mean, most of you probably never stepped foot on that beach. But if you did, you'd understand, even if the water is second clear, which it may very well be doing, to get there, you have to walk through goose droppings. Not a very pleasant thing.
Which, not to reiterate, but that's exactly the problem that we talk about Mr. Zell on a regular basis. We do not have a solution how to get the Canadian geese to leave Lacy Township. We have that problem in our parks, we have that problem in the schools, they're everywhere. And I mean, now they're infiltrating the lagoon areas. You see them up and down the lagoon areas. We don't have a solution how to do it yet. You know, we are not alone. We're involved in this just like a lot of other towns are. And we're trying to find a way to deal with it. The problem with the drainage.
Are you actively, that's what I mean, that's what I'd like to hear. You actively trying to find a way, not just every month saying, yeah, we're gonna look at that, we're gonna take care of that.
We've been soliciting and looking for grants to help us with the assistance of that, the drainage portion.
The drainage portion, we know we have to address. But honestly, getting the drainage resolved and the million dollars worth of work that has been done to dredge the lake and do the drainage is not gonna solve the geese problem. We still have a major, major problem with the geese. And until we can get a way to get them out of that area and other areas in town, we're dealing with the goose issue, the goose poop, whatever you wanna call it, on a weekly basis. When we had the lake open last year, Casey was running machines over it every day to make sure that we could do what we could to keep those beaches clean. But again, like Otto points out, you're running a machine over it. You're really dislodging the location of where it exists and moving it around, which is not the ultimate solution in any way whatsoever either. So we know we have to have a solution. The county does not have a solution. You know, the state, as far as I know, does not have any solution for it. But we have to continue to try and find ways. When we did the addling of the lakes a couple of years ago, we thought we were having success there, but apparently it wasn't the success that it should have been as far as the numbers go. The kite, Otto was talking about the kite. We spent $500 on a kite, which we were guaranteed was gonna work. We've had the black dogs that you put out there. These geese, as quick as you put something out, they learn not to be afraid of it. And they're there. But you know, it's not something that by any means does this governing body wanna see that lake go away and fail. That's not something that we're gonna allow to happen, but we don't have a solution right now. And we will continue to work towards finding something. When the county did the drainage over in the Mill Pond Lake, not Mill Pond, Little Lake there, it really did a heck of a job. It really cleaned that lake up. You know, we've been told that the water flowing from Deerhead Lake over to that lake is clear because of the fact of the riprap that it flows through going out across the street there, which is the way you cleanse water now with drainage basins. So that is working and we're not having pollution problems down there. That lake has been dredged a number of times, it's a lot deeper. So it's more attractive to the kids. But we certainly don't wanna see this lake by any means fail and go away permanently.
Because I see all the things being done at the lake, the boat, the boats, the paddle boards, the afternoons there with food truck or whatever, little parties on the beach and the new little thing park on the end there and all these nice things, which is great. And then our beach is sitting there closed and, you know, not a good feeling. It doesn't make me feel confident that there truly is a real effort to save that lake. And that's what I wanna hear, that's what everybody wants to hear that lives there. I mean, these are maybe 50 people we got in a matter of days. And all of them had exactly the same thing to say. We came here because we love the lakes and what has happened. And they're all either afraid to come here, they're intimidated to come here, or they say they're not gonna do anything anyways to watch it and bother. Does that make what your citizens do feel? I don't think so. I don't think so.
Matt, Mayor.
I don't think we should.
I grew up swimming in that lake. I've been here. I swam when a white dock was out in the lake. I swam under it, I jumped off it.
Exactly.
So I certainly understand your concern over the history of that lake. But the simple point is that I don't think anybody on this board will authorize a mass euthanasia, you know, mass geese kill.
I don't think I asked for that.
No, I know, but I'm just saying that that's really the problem. And until that, until we get, and there is no solution to that. So until somebody comes up with a halfway good idea about, you know, how to take care of the geese to make them go away, yes, I have a hard time seeing anything being done on that.
So then you're saying the lake is continuing to deteriorate?
Until somebody comes up with a good idea or until we see something like that, I don't think that, yeah, I think that's a difficult problem to overcome and I don't know what there is to do about it. We've looked at, like, as the mayor said, we've looked at different things, but none of them have either worked or are impractical. They're just, we haven't had a good idea yet.
I mean, you have 50 people there that you said signed a petition. If any of them have ideas, you know, I'll meet the people separately. If you don't want, I don't want them coming here if they're feeling uncomfortable by any means. You know, call Town Hall, I'll set something up, I'll come over there, you know, sit down and talk about it.
I wish we had some engineers in our group, maybe we do, I don't know. They could come up with some ideas, but.
It's the geese problem.
It's the geese problem. It's not anything else, but the geese is first. I mean, and that's it. If we can't fix the geese problem, it almost becomes a waste of money fixing the drainage there. But that's a different argument.
Yeah, we've looked at other concepts and ideas that other towns might have done. There was one with some laser lights. That worked for one season for one town and the second season they were back. Just like the first year our agaddling worked, now it doesn't seem to be working. There was aeration devices that they've put into lakes. They've worked for one season and the geese are back. They seem to adapt to their environment and nothing seems to be working to be successful, you know, in various different locations throughout, you know, just Ocean County alone that we've been monitoring what they've done. So we haven't found that solution yet.
There was one day in the spring, I was riding past through Gilly Park. There must have been 500 geese on those soccer fields, at least.
And part of what keeps them away is activity. Now that there's no activity on our beach anymore and the people there, they're more at home than ever before, that there was maybe 75 to 100. That's increased now to over 200.
Yeah, there's a lot of geese in that lake, there's definitely, yes.
Because, hey, it's, nobody's there to bother, nobody's there to chase them. I'd like to see dogs running on the beach and chase away anything, you know, dogs on the beach. I think dogs are preferable, that's me. I don't, you know, I don't have the answers. If I had the answers, I'd worry about it anymore, just ask me for help. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I need a break. Francis Senza from Sunset Drive. I wanted to thank Mayor Quinn and the committee, especially you, sir, for your efforts on aligning operations out there upon this. They're really tearing up a place for those of you who don't know about it. Ripping up the 100-foot buffer zones. And also last week, for those of you who didn't see the paper, which I dropped off your copy.
I just got that, yeah.
The paper suggested that the pines are under severe attack by illegal dirt bikers. They're ripping up the place with ruts. They're poaching pine stables and other dangerous species. This is the most populated state in the country. The most densely populated, it's the most disliked from the newspapers. And it ain't getting any better. But this is a national treasure that, I appreciate your efforts, we have to protect. I made a donation to somebody in Washington, a conservation organization. She said, you know, I gotta go up to New Jersey next week and I'm not looking forward to it. It's ugly, it's from the traffic and the turnpike. And I said, wait a minute, I said, let me send you the link of the Conservation Foundation of New Jersey. She wrote back, she said, I'm embarrassed. You have a lot of beautiful spots here in New Jersey. We should preserve them, so thank you, do what you can.
Thanks, Senza.
Good evening. Jim Moutelier, Lacy Township. I might say something that's not popular, but I often do anyway. The issue with these geese, and it's not just the lakes in town. You go out to Bamber Lake and you go out to Davenport Lake and you go out to the gravel cliffs, which is my drinking water, is now. The law allows permits to shoot and kill. And the law allows to even give those geese to food banks. Well, it's a popular dish in Europe. Most Americans don't eat it, but a lot of Europeans do eat geese.
I'll skip that meal.
But anyway, years ago, they used to give permits to the hunting clubs. And the hunting clubs used to come out to the lakes and eliminate the problem. They're not native to this area. And it's probably like the immigration policy is broken, they stay here. But that's the only solution. Geese will leave when they see guns and they start shooting at it. And I guarantee that's the only solution you're gonna find. It's not popular, but you know what? People hunt here anyway, they hunt deer. It keeps your population in check. And I think you should look at the statutes and look at a lot of hunting clubs and people that wanna hunt them. Just my opinion because it's the only way to get rid of it.
Thanks, Jim.
I do have a couple of things and I apologize. I didn't get to read the agenda this week because I've been a little busy. But I did send Veronica the Patrick Law from the Judicial Advisory to mold a court. Before you do anything with the ordinance, the law was signed into by Governor Christie in August of 2013, enhance the penalties and gain law enforcement, whether it's your animal control, your main society, sheriffs or police officers, the right to take action against people who do not supply adequate food and shelter and water to animals that are left out days unattended. The unfortunate thing, there's very few things. When you go into the animal rights under the Agricultural Act, which is Title IV, Section 22, from 10 through 70, there's various things. If an animal's left in a car and it needs immediate attention, an officer can break the window, remove the dog. But when you have a situation like that, even if your code enforcement officer went out, this dog is not being fed unless it needs immediate medical attention, you cannot confiscate the dog until they're found guilty in a court of law. And then you're gonna make a petition to the judge to seize that animal. So while, there's a lot of good intentions. There are certain laws already on the book, there are state statutes. They've been upgraded, like I said, the Patrick's Law. You could maybe work with the legislators for a little more upgrading. But you know, it's not just tethering. Do you put a dog, what if I have a dog and it run? How big is the running gotta be? Does it have the proper shelter, you know, the proper shade? So again, enacting a law, I believe counsel could tell you, you can't supersede state law. And you also can't enact a piece of legislation that the state has not deemed unlawful. You know, so you get into a tough area which will preempt it. And I support, you know, taking care of the animals and things of that nature. But you don't rush into too many things with statutes already out there.
Right, right.
I do wanna touch on a couple of questions. Item number three, the emergency match for an interest. Nothing against Chief Apparato, that's not my comment. My comment is, is that position still a state pension position?
No, not any longer.
If no longer?
No.
That's my only concern about having dual state pensions.
Yeah, no, no.
Okay. Four, five, and six. I happen to be doing research, believe it or not, on inactive license this week. And I came across a directive from the ABC Commission that any inactive licenses prior to June of 2013 and 2014, if they were inactive, they cannot be renewed by the municipality to get reviewed and approved by state.
Yeah, the state sends me a list of those that they're under review and those can't be renewed and there's still one sitting on my desk because of that.
Okay, I'm just.
I'm well aware of it.
I didn't think you would, but I'm just bringing it to the Township because it came up. A question with the police department. Are we replacing the windows or just the glazing?
No, the whole windows, the entire windows.
Yeah, because they're shot.
Yeah, they're shot.
Well, they were shot and they were global. Here's a concern I have under item 21. The fact that you purchase vehicles from Ford, I have no problem with. But in 22 and 23, you're having other companies install equipment into those vehicles.
No, we didn't say that. I'm purchasing equipment from other companies.
We're doing it.
We are doing the install in-house here.
Whether you're doing the install or not, check with Ford because I had to sign a contract with them when I purchased them for Hike Sound. If we install anything to their electronics, you.
Void.
Do you warranty all electrical systems?
They special, we work with the state contract vendors and they do special things for police vehicles to have them prewired for what we need to have them installed with the equipment that we're purchasing. It's a coordinated effort.
Just let me know because.
Yes, we're well aware of the.
Because Woodford is a state licensed contractor for any equipment that you buy.
Yeah, we're aware of the voiding of the warranty and we do have special wiring done in advance prior to us receiving the vehicles.
As long as it's funded. Another issue under, which is coming up very soon, school board elections. This is the fourth anniversary since Governor Christie signed a change in the law allowing to move the school board from April to November. I think it's pretty obvious to the residents, this community and those involved in politics that in recent years, the school board has become a very partisan political issue. And the law allows for either the school board, which I've had private conversations with a few of them that do agree to bring the election back to April, but just concerned about the cost. The law also allows this municipal governing body to take and vote to move that election back to April. And their third option is allowing it to be put on the ballot in November to allow the voters to vote on it. I'm asking this council whether you take the option to vote to, you know, if you agree to move it back to April, or at least to pass a resolution asking to put it on the ballot. Again, I've spoken to three school board members, I'm gonna address this issue. Being a candidate last year, I can tell you it was a very, very partisan election. And I don't think partisan politics, not that there's not politics involved in the school board, but as a former board member, I saw a big change in the way the school board election is being handled because of this move. And campaigning, speaking to hundreds of people in town, as I knock on doors and everybody's concerned about taxes, their biggest concern is the school district because it's two-thirds the share of municipal tax. But they're also concerned that they don't have the right to vote on the budget anymore. And when the school board took and exercised their right under statute, they took away the right of the voters and the residents, community to say yes or no to the school board and its budget. And that's the only way that the residents and voters can exercise their right other than changing members of the school board. But that takes several years to clean house there. So if this council isn't willing to change the election, would this council be at least willing to put it on the ballot for the voters to vote on?
We've, I myself have spoken to a few school board members also that came to me and talked about that, moving it back to the April date. And I think they've had an outcry from a lot of people in town, the same, you know, things you're talking about with the, you know, not voting on the budget and, you know, political stuff. We're trying to get a meeting set up before the 1st of August, which was supposed to have been last Monday, but it was canceled, with the school board, the superintendent and Jim Savage. And what I'd like to do is talk to them first and see if that's the direction they're gonna be going in. And if not, I think. And if not, I think, you know, we as a committee will certainly sit down and bring that matter, you know, in amongst ourselves. And I, I would say it's probably something that, you know, some of us look very favorably on. I don't know if we all do or not, but I just need a couple of weeks to be able to take and address this.
I appreciate it. And I think it should be a joint matter between the two bodies.
Yeah.
But ultimately, if the two bodies can't agree, I believe it should be put on the ballot for voters to decide.
Yeah, yeah. That was, that was one of the ideas that was brought up by the folks that I talked to. And, and, you know, that puts them in the voter's hands, which makes, makes a lot of sense.
The other thing we're talking about, you touched on about New Jersey being more business friendly, that also includes power plants. And I've spoken to a number of people in the nuclear industry and basically they've given up on New Jersey especially, even trying to consider because of permit process and the millions of dollars it just adds with litigation. However, they turned me towards a company down in Texas and it's the Panda Energy Group. And they've built 14 natural gas plants and two solar power plants so far. And reading all over New Jersey, they don't use cooling towers, they don't use bay water, they use air cool and water cools. So it would have very little impact on the environment. We negate a lot of concerns that environmentalists have with another power plant. And the amazing thing is depending on the permitting process, New Jersey's a little more stringent, but between three to four years, their plants are up and running. Natural gas, much larger, more megawatts than Oyster Creek currently puts out. And the other thing I found interesting, talking to these people, the byproduct from the natural gas is something they're capturing because, and they use the chemical names, so it went over my head, where they can actually sell that byproduct when we're going to pay for natural gas. So I know this governing body's looking at different options. And if you don't mind, I'll send you a link to their site and I think you could look through it because while we all know it's not going to produce as many permanent jobs as a nuclear power plant, it's still over a four-year period produced about 800 construction jobs and long-term. The most recent plant they're working on is contributing 1.7 billion, would it be, to the local economy.
So we would like that link.
I will send it to you and I think it's something that would be a good starting point to look at.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Ms. Moss?
Well, Bill Moss, this hand drive for River Beach. I'm going to do what I usually do about the school taxes so people understand. Township bill was $6,515,169.17, 97 cents. But our school taxes, part of that is $3,536,302. People have to understand that that figure is $87,000 per month for the next 12 months that goes to the school board. That means in our taxes, what you have to report every month, it's a million and $44,000 more that we're sending to our schools than we did last year. Next thing I have, question on the audit. The, under the assets, the cash and investments has dropped almost $4 million. Are you going to tell me why?
We don't have, you know, we use our surplus year after year and roll it into our current budget. So, I, I mean, how do you earn interest on something if you don't have money sitting in the bank? And then the interest isn't there to, to earn that.
No, if you want to stop in tomorrow, Linda will be, I'll be in the afternoon if you want to stop in.
Yeah, I didn't bring my audit with me to even look those things up right now.
Okay. My next question, there's something you're calling funds balance utilized. In 2013, it was $3,600,000, next year it's $3,600,000.
That's the anticipated revenue that we roll into each year's budget based on the surplus. So we, that's what we regenerate basically every year. This year, I think we used 4.1 million of it. We usually have a balance around 4 million. This year, 4 million, 4.1, and this year we use 4 million of it.
Are you saying that's the utilization of the anticipated revenue?
That's surplus.
But also the same figure is used for the fund balance utilized?
Yeah, it's, it's, a lot of the numbers are the same based on what side of the balance sheet that they're on, right? Some carry over to other line items.
Okay, those are two questions, thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
I'll see Linda.
Yeah, I'll be back here for lunch tomorrow if, you know, you want me to be in the building. I just, I forgot to find lunch. Anyone else?
Seeing on motion, it goes to Ford.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Most to adjourn?
Move it.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
You guys want to stay?
Thanks, folks.